Good evening. This meeting in the Winter of Town Council for May 19th, 2015 is now called to order. Meeting is being recorded and may be televised live. All please stand for the Fledgled Leagues. Councilor Mayo.
Should we make an announcement about the fact that we finally have a stand for the flag? We've provided dignity and grace for the flag after three years.
God bless America.
What was that?
God bless America.
God bless America.
It starts with a pledge.
A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing. I'd like to have a moment of silence for Bob Capesa. Get through this. Bob was a dear friend, committed, dedicated educator. He was a special guy. He loved his job. He loved working with kids that had difficulties. And he wasn't easy. He was a "get over here kid." And he would talk to the kid. And when he was all through, it was "okay, we're friends again." He loved his work. And he would sum it up every once in a while with a smile on his face. And they'd say, "A lot of pressure." But God love Bobby. He died very suddenly, very young. But a moment of silence. Dear friend, I love you. Rest in peace, Bobby. Counselor Clark, would you call a vote?
Counselor Callen. Counselor Simpkins. Counselor Valkory. Counselor Verone.
What is it?
Yeah.
Counselor, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Counselor Terry. Counselor Boyajin.
That's it.
Counselor Gaventa.
Good.
My President Mayo.
Yeah.
President Gill.
Present. The quorum is present. The minutes from May 5th, 2015, as circulated, I have a motion, please. Motion by Counsel Simpkins, second of all.
Second.
Second by Counsel Boyajin. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I'm abstaining because I wasn't here.
Counsel Callen will abstain because she wasn't here. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both unanimous. Thank you. Public hearing. At this point, I'd like to open up the public hearing on the fiscal '16 budget for the town of Winthrop. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on the budget? Anybody from the council that would like to speak on the budget? Mr. President? Counselor Gaventa.
I'd just like to say, people are going to see, you know, this hearing today as the citizens' opportunity to speak on the budget. But I do want everybody to know that Citizens Finance Committee has been meeting very diligently since March. We've had probably seven to 10 meetings. I lost count. We meet usually twice a week, Tuesday nights and Thursday nights. So there has been a lot of work in several, several hearings in Citizens Finance Commission already on the budget. So it's been extensive review as it's been developed, and the town manager and Tim Gordon for there. And all the departments have participated because most of them have been before the commission to state their case. And I thank the Finance Commission also for getting this done to where we are today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I too would like to commend McKenna and his whole team for all the efforts that they've put into the preparation of the budget. Lots of changes during, lots of adjustments had to be made. And as always, the professionalism of our Finance Commission is beyond reproaches. They just go on and on and on and work very diligently. And I appreciate your efforts, Finance Commission, Chairman Bob Wynn, Ms. Tucci, Bob Briscoe there in the audience. It's been a great job. So if there are no further comments, Counsel.
I know it would come as an amendment, but I was very moved in sitting and listening to the public library trustees speak. And I know that there has been some discussion about the public library and that they should make a better effort throughout the course of the year. I think the library, while some people think it's a mode of taking out books and books are sort of beyond the scope of what people do now, I think the library has a very, very important role in a town and an organization like ours. And I think that more and more people become reliant on the library because of its technology and its computers. And I know that we have a newer director of the library who didn't get a full year in there to, you know, bang and harp and change your mind about it. I think the $30,000 on a $45 million budget is a small amount of money for the joy and convenience that it gives. I know everybody was very happy last year when we were able to extend the summer hours. And I think it fills the circle of what we try to do as a community. And I think it's short money. And I think if there's a way to add that in, it should be added in. And I know that there was a counter thought that if you give these guys, everybody else wants some. But I think that the library brings a return across the board for many, many people. And I thought overall that the money was not a large amount of money. And I honestly feel and I hope somebody else would be willing to support the fact that we should, for a small amount of money, should be able to add that on so that the library can open up the extra hours that they wanted to and provide that service for the community. So my support, I hope anybody who's listening would be willing to call around to other councils. It'll come up for a vote in the next two weeks. And that could be an amendment. And if it is an amendment, then we just need to find out where it funded from. So all the effort goes on to Jim, but all of the enjoyment comes back to the citizens. So if you have no problem putting work onto him and enjoyment onto us, then you'll support extending the library.
You're welcome. Ms. Shaki.
I just did.
No, I'm sorry, Paul.
One more comment.
Counsel Verone, then we'll come back.
Sure. Thank you. I just had one comment on the budget. I was initially looking at the veterans' budget, and it was a little bit shy of the request. And after talking to the town manager and Tim CFO, I feel that it's a good start and possibly we'd have to prepare ourselves at some point in the future, having them come back to us for a supplement. Because we are at the tail end of two wars, and there are a lot of veterans returning with many problems. And hopefully, we won't inherit any of those problems. But they are our veterans, and we do owe it to them. Thank you.
Mrs. Shaki.
Yes, thank you.
Just identify your name and frequency.
Hi, I'm Mary Alice Shaki, a member of the school committee and chairperson of the budgets committee of this school committee. If I may, I'm just going to ask if I can pass some of this information. Mr. President?
Chief DeMefo.
Where's the uniform?
Got that electronically so we can put it up on the board?
I'm.
You have it electronically so we can put it up on the board?
No, I don't. I don't.
Is there an extra one?
Yes, I can answer that.
Thank you. That's it. Do you have any more?
Yes, I do. I have one more.
Mrs. Shaki.
All right. We were given last week the amount that the town was considering giving us for the school department. We had originally asked for a budget of $17,979,318. We were given $17,416,000, which implies there to be a $563,000 difference. I wanted to at least acknowledge, and I did numerous times send a letter from our finance committee concerning the funding that we received. And we did want to say from our finance committee and our school committee that we appreciated the $465,000. But knowing that that's still 400, I'm sorry, over $500,000 less than the needs of our school system. Right now, in front of you, you can see the areas that the superintendent reduced in order to come up with the $581,000 that we needed to reduce from the budget of $17,979. Within that budget, the most grievous things that have been reduced or eliminated, this is not to indicate that we're having any layoffs, not putting any of these positions into place. But we are, they are vitally needed. And I'm looking and targeting especially the supplemental math tutor and the math coach, one for $50,000 and the other for $30,000, for a total of $80,000. My request is coming from because I have been for different times making contact with the town manager and Tim, talking about the amount of money that we as a town have accrued in free cash. And with that money, starting in September, I believe it was somewhere over $3 million that we had accrued for free cash. And my, not necessarily my question, but my feelings, I guess I can say, is that there was a time, I had discussed this a smidgen with Karen Chavez, and I thought the lowest we had ever had in free cash was $1,000 to $200,000. And Karen informed me, "No, no, no, Mary, it was zero at one time." So it's looking at those numbers that I'm asking, which is part of the letter that I had asked, is maybe could we not prioritize and slowing up our accrue of our free cash and use it and transfer that extra money? That's what I follow. And I'm not, I know that you all think it's not extra money, but I'm just saying of monies that we've never really had the opportunity to ever even have within our town budget. As I stated in the letter, because we got a three-star rating because of the amount of money we have been able to accrue, potentially we have a chance of saving a million dollars a year on our high school line in over 20 years. That could be $20 million, which is significant. So I guess what I'm asking is that, one, could we not prioritize and maybe spread that money? I know I'm representing the school system, but I'm just hearing Mr. Verone speak about the veterans, that they could use a little more money with their budget. So though I'm asking, because that's my job for the school department, I'm asking also for all of our departments or requesting that we just loosen up a little bit in the next five to seven years on that free cash. And considering that is that we have, I guess I'm coming to you and just plain saying, we need at least $80,000 to $100,000 extra. I know that's an exorbitant amount of money to come before you all and request. I know that. But looking past, and that's what the second sheet that you have in front of you, I was just trying to show that over the last, first of all, the last eight years, that per pupil expenditures have gone from us being $1,100 below the state average to $2,200 below the state average. We've doubled the amount in seven years that we are below per pupil expenditure for our children. And I know I've said this before, if we multiplied the amount of students, we have 2,000 times that, we have over $4 million. So I'm not asking for $4 million. But I am coming forward to you to state that possibly we could use that math tutor, that math coach, and the technology. If you can look at what Mr. Masero and the building principals presented, it also included about $23,000 in technology and technology supplies. And I spoke to the superintendent, and as I said, I said, asked him, I said, "John, can I promise to the council that that's what it will be used for?" And he said, "If the council will give it to us, he will promise that that money will be used to hire a math tutor and a math coach." A math tutor goes actually into the classrooms of the children, helping to support children. A math coach actually does both. He or she goes into the classroom to support the children, which he also goes and has special sessions or meetings with the various grade school teachers and actually teaching them the new formats or a new way to approach a subject matter like within the math context. So that's pretty basically what we've been asking. We have lost through nine seat cuts, we lost $20,000 for kindergarten. And as we said, there's no way we want to raise athletic fees, and we are not intending to do that unless our hands get forced. But we're not. We're not looking at charging our children who we have not paid for kindergarten in five years, and we have no intentions of asking for that either. I'm trying to be as honest as I can. And at this point, the only people that will be getting laid off this year are people who have not acquired their certifications. So therefore, and they no longer can ask for an extension. So, or teachers who just haven't performed, I guess, according to their evaluations. So there is no one that's going to be released from a position or a layoff that isn't that they have done their performances and they have done all the required courses and degrees that they need to have. So I guess my final thing is to request or to ask or for you to look at potentially giving us $80,000 to $100,000 extra within our school budget for the purpose of, to be specific, is to bring on a math tutor, a math coach, and potentially some technology into the school system. And why I targeted the math, and I think that most of you already know, is that's the area that our school system is the weakest, is in our math. And we need to raise the scores. And it's not just raise the scores because I'm not a proponent of standard testing. But it's to raise the level of education for our kids. It's to give them the opportunity, because now they are going into a more challenged world as far as science, math, and technology is concerned. And if we're weak in that area, then they'll leave here. So I'm asking to provide them, especially on the elementary level, because that's where the two positions are, one's in the Gorman and one's in the Cummings. And I can only say, Mr. Harity has worked diligently with Mr. Curley, the vice principal, about incorporating something that's called Ten Marks. And Ten Marks is a special program that is targeting children in each grade level. And they're assessed to see what are they weak in. And if it's, say, a fifth grader is weak in something that is taught in the fourth, then they will target that child, not target, approach that child and reteach that fourth grade skill so that then they can learn it to move on to their sixth, from their fifth into their sixth. So that's pretty basically. And he feels pretty strongly, and of course, we always are questioning him, that we're going to see some significant changes in the math scores in the Cummings. And I pray for him that it does only, and if it doesn't, then usually it takes two to three years. He's young, he's enthusiastic, he wants it to happen. But I believe that if it doesn't happen this year, he'll definitely get it on board in two or three years, and we'll see those scores.
Thank you, Mr. Shaki. Any further comments on the budget? Counsel.
No.
If not, the budget hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shaki.
Thank everyone for giving me the time.
Okay.
Yes.
And we'll move on to the second hearing, which is on the transfer of $50,000 for free cash. And I'll read the content of the hearing. I move, this is from the town manager, "I move that the town council authorized transfer of $50,000 for free cash to fund the enterprise fund known as the, quote, 'Town of Winthrop Tourism and Culture Fund,' end of quote, or take any action relative thereto." Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on that motion? Mr. President? Let me just go before the council. Mr. McKenna?
I have proposed a business plan as part of the budget that seeks to establish a municipally operated ferry service. We will be in receipt of a ferry vessel about three quarters of the way through the month of August. We need to establish an enterprise, fund and build out essentially what is a small business to run this ferry service. I think we've read the business plan. You'll see that we were very conservative in our estimates of utilization. We did base the model off of several other ferry services that we are aware of, particularly the town hall service. And we're looking for a very different approach, one that not only moves Winthrop folks to Boston, but asks Boston folks to come to visit and to really start really positioning Winthrop as a place to come and visit and to support our local businesses and, you know, set Winthrop up as a destination particularly for recreational opportunities in the region. And it really is, we're at a point where we have invested over $5 million of federal, state, and local resources into bringing a ferry onboard, if you will, as a municipal service. We believe that we can price competitively this premium service. We're talking about getting some patronage support for other ways to support this service, advertising, other sources of revenue as well, co-branding with restaurants and other opportunities. We're looking at really letting this become one of the feature components of a broader approach to making Winthrop reach its potential that we've all talked about. But now it's time to reach out and realize that potential. So while this is about starting a new enterprise, it's really about putting a stake in the ground and claiming that Winthrop will be a destination for folks in the region and to bring opportunity to Winthrop such as, you know, kayaking, sailing. We're in a surfing club that's going to start out on a beach this summer. All of these things are ripe for readiness and to be achieved. The ferry offers that access to those opportunities. And we have to do it. We have to do it ourselves. And we have to recognize that the best place to do it is within our party division. We've been working shoulder to shoulder with them to plan effectively for the incorporation of this service. All the while, we have submitted an RFP to determine again, you know, the private sector opportunity that might be available for someone to come in and run this. But we have to have a strong Plan B. Because right now, one entity controls all of, virtually all of the harbor. And our initial indicators are that our scale is not their model. And the pricing of that would really put us not in the best position to succeed because their overhead and operating expenses are too expensive for the town. So we need to be lean, but we need to be positioned to attract people to come to Winthrop and using the ferry service. And also, you know, provide an opportunity for our residents to once again enjoy that ability to get on a boat and go to Boston for work or for pleasure. And we're talking with places to land the vessel now, and there's some interest there. You know, there's plenty of potential here. But we have to start, start small and grow it out. And I think the plan is a reasonable plan that suggests that proposition. So we're asking for one bite at a time strategy of funding where we'll start, you know, building out our marketing aspects and our initial staffing, as well as, you know, outfitting our ferry terminal building properly for, you know, to accommodate this. We get calls every single day now for the ferry. Where is the ferry? Our harbor masters are being asked every day, nonstop, when's the ferry coming? So it's time that we set it up, we get it launched, we do it well, and we do it, you know, smart, lean, and with the resources that we have within our municipal services. And this is our first ask for operating funds to help us do that.
Thank you.
I hope you've taken a look at the business plan. I'm open to any questions you might have about it.
Any comments from the Council? Counselor Mayo?
So we're going to get the ferry later on in the season. And there's a whole business theory around the fact that maybe it's better to start off slow and you learn. Because I don't think we have any handle on the expenses. But the prime ridership for those ancillary items, the nighttime travel, the islands, you know, when I looked at the way we broke down the day parts, you're really going to be focusing on the ferry commuter service for that period of time when you get the boat. You're going to have a couple of weekends left, you may have a few nice nights, but in terms of building up that ancillary trade, I think it may not be the best place to market to. I just don't know if it's going to work. And, you know, you do have, I think you called for 178 days of commuter service, and you were going to go from, let's say, September 1st until November 15th. There's a whole other model that says maybe the best way to get people in is to give them a little fix. Now, I know a couple of weeks ago, I put out a proposal that found no support. As a matter of fact, my good friend, the chief, who's not here tonight, sort of joked about it, and I know other people have. But I did hear a comment at Citizens Finance about the fact that maybe we should just go with a different model. And that is a total low or no cost model, where we get people hooked on it based on cost. So we can really get people to think about, hey, do I want to make this a model for my going in? The one part that we're going to be working on is the commuter ferry. So maybe we make that, instead of going at a higher price, maybe you go off and you have a two or three month trial where you're at a very, very low cost. Maybe you go in at a $2 or $3 model that just means that somebody that's thinking about taking the train into town is now going to say, whoa, there's a better option to come here. And then, as they see the value of it, maybe when it gets to next year, you go up to a more, you know, cost versus price model. But by that point in time, they're already realizing, hey, this is it. So, you know, I don't know if it's a good idea or a bad idea. I think it's at least worth thinking about going in on a low to no cost marketing model for that ferry back and forth to the city for the commuter hours. So different thought, different approach. Don't know if it'll work, but don't know what will or won't.
Counsel. I think Counsel Boyajin was.
No, I mean, I'm not opposed to it, but I guess we've talked, I have concerns about, are we going to get these folks in? And you've talked about, we're in the process of looking at a landing place, we're in the process of getting restaurants and things like that onboard. I guess I'd be more in tune with delaying the opening until the next season while you get these in line and get people signed up to be the restaurants, to be the landing place, so that all the ducks are in a row before you kick it off. I guess I'm concerned that you're setting it up almost for fail if we don't have enough of restaurants signed up and we don't have the partners lined up, I guess.
I think what we're talking about on the hearing tonight is whether or not we're going to set up a fund, not whether or not we're going to have the ferry. Well. Go ahead, Sergeant.
You know, I think all ideas are on the table, which is a wonderful thing. I mean, and certainly I and everyone in the administration is open to, you know, discussing. And I think we should have, you know, some full and frank discussions about, you know, how we should launch this. I think what we've recognized are a couple of things. You don't just turn the lights on around a ferry. You know, we're setting up a business, and we need the four months from now till then to do those very things. We also recognize that September and October are the best weather months of the year, and we're going to have a vessel. And while we may offer it as a discount to do some of what Counselor Mayo was suggesting as a sort of, you know, a campaign to drive support for the ferry, that's, I think, something we ought to consider. I wanted in the plan, though, to show you that if we reach a certain critical mass, where is that break even point? You know, to do an honest You know, to do an honest business plan that says, look, what do we need to cover our expenses? We're going to have basically an expense run rate of about $1,300 to $1,500 a day. We need to clear that and then do better. And how do we do that? That means we fill 31 seats, okay? Or we run at a 43% capacity, which is pretty conservative when you think about, you know, a good ferry that we're going to get, that's weather enclosed, that's going to have concession, that's going to be well-run and on time and reliable service, certainly ought be able to compete at, when you compare it against taking the T to Boston, if that's what your core constituency is going to be. And that's at least initially, okay? Do I think that, you know, folks are going to want to take it in the middle of the day to do, you know, the things and avoid the parking expense of Boston and avail themselves of all that, you know, is Boston? Sure. You know, we're going to see more than that. Nighttime, you know, retreats into Boston for dinner, all of that is what we're thinking about. But we're not counting it first, because we want to have a conservative approach to our expense model. And say, over and above that, then we're playing with, you know, house money at that point. And we want to have plenty of headroom to be able to do that. So while there's all kinds of thoughts, and I'm open to all of them, and I think the Harbor Management Committee, as well as the Finance Commission, you know, all are eager to understand fully what this involves. And, you know, we're going to be running a transportation business. The good news is, it's being done and being done well and successfully in other communities. So it's not like, you know, we're striking out on this, you know, new frontier. This is done. It just has to be done first, you know, smart and lean and reliable. And at some point, you know, should we learn from our, you know, that's why we don't want to do a soft opening, to actually take a measure of what those expenses are. And to then, you know, recapitulate what those are and then build a plan around those things. But that doesn't mean that we put the boat, once we get it on dry dock and leave it for another day. We can do this, and we should take those 10 weeks to measure exactly what our expenditure side is, and then what it's going to take to achieve, you know, our financial objectives in the plan. And so that's the soft opening that we're looking to.
Counsel, simple.
Yeah, and I have to agree with the town manager. It's been something I've been involved in for probably 10 years, even prior to coming to the town. But small business is small business. This is a small business within a large business, which is our town. Most restaurants have a soft opening. They may take a week or two weeks. They may discount their menu, but they don't give it away. I think it's important, because if you give it away and then you charge a full price, then it's a little bit of a sticker shock to some people. Again, my, you know, I've been advocating for this for a long time. I think it invites and stimulates local economic development. I know there's going to be some trips out, but I think it also, it's important to bring folks in. Could be a harbor cruise that sets out at the ferry, out at the landing, and comes back with a dinner, which is incorporated with some of the other restaurants. So there's lots of opportunity here for marking our local economy as well as our harbor. I think obviously it's to showcase our community, makes it more inviting for young professionals to move here, it makes it more inviting for people, families to stay here, and for people to settle here. And I think that's an important part of what the ferry is about. What we do in the off time, whether again, it's a harbor cruise or things along those lines, I'm excited about. It adds recreation for our own townspeople, recreational opportunity. And last but not least, it is a commuter ferry. And I know you've taken great strides in investigating Holland, how they handle their commuter aspect opposed to the recreational side. And I think their commuter side is the downside of what they do. They make most of their money from some of the other things that they accomplish. And I think that's the opportunity, and that's the direction you're heading. So the ferry, the soft opening, I'm in favor. A month or two on this side, and then a grand opening comes next spring, I think is important. But I think as a small business, we have to look at it as a small business. We're going to have some bumps in the road, but I'm excited about it. So, I support your enterprise fund.
Counsel Gyllenhaal.
Yeah, and I think too, I think it's important to have these months, because there's always some things that you got to get out. You want to kind of see what they are, you get an idea, so that you can be really off and running come next season, you know, exactly where you're going with that. So I think it's great.
Any further input from the council? Counsel Devin, could you do it?
The other thing I want to say as President is that the Council Finance Committee did meet on it and did give a favorable recommendation.
Any further comment from the council?
I didn't want to give the impression that I am actually for the funds. I just, as I said, some concerns.
And Council President, I believe we all are.
Yeah, we are, I do too.
So we're all excited. And the business community, if I may, is very excited about it too. And they want to see us make that commitment, which we already made. But when we establish this fund and we establish a real marketing plan, I think we're going to have a lot of people jumping on board, and it was no pun intended.
Any further comment from the council or from the public? If not, that hearing is closed. We'll move on to public comment.
Just for those who go to bed early, we have started fireworks fundraising, the people's fireworks, they pay for the fireworks. Mastport is always a major contributor to the fireworks, but there will be T-shirts and we will be out fundraising.
Where are you fundraising chief, and how can people access the T-shirts and the funds?
Well, the T-shirts aren't going to be out for another week or so, and we're having a few merchants that will be taking and will be putting that ad into the paper where they can at the next council meeting. If you would like to donate to the fireworks, just go look for fireworks, you can send checks to the party following East Street. Over the past three years that I've been raising, like the residents of the town and outside the town as well, have been extremely generous.
Okay, thanks chief. Any further public, Mr. Belino?
Is this public in general, or maybe any subject?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Jim Belino.
Yes, I should say. Thank you. Thank you, Council, for having the speak. I know that you have been seriously considered a matter of the Herman Street Church. And I applaud you because you're taking great pains with it, trying to do what's right for the neighbors and what's right for the town. And I know it's a difficult decision for all of you. But why I came tonight as a developer has informed me that they're going to be doing in-house marketing, they're not going to be using the services of high level real estate to promote the sale of the building. And I wanted to let you know that, so that you could all vote clear conscious without any concerns about conflicts or any of that type of thing. So I wanted to put that on the record.
Thank you, Mr. Belino. Appreciate that.
Thank you again.
Is there any further public comment? See, no. Move on to correspondents. Correspondents. Because, we're going to get through this with this clock. We have a correspondent from the survivors by the sea. Dear Mr. Gyllenhaal Council Members, as you already may be aware from various flyers posted around town, Marie Hamilton and Phil Hamilton have graciously decided to change their large annual Hurricane Cancer Society fundraiser to a road race that will solely benefit the survivors by the sea. Because cancer itself is often a family struggle, as I hope that this gathering will be happy and supportive of family and friends event. Caregivers, survivors, those who are currently undergoing treatment, and the loved ones of those who fight as ended. There will be refreshments before and immediately following the run, along with beverage stations along the route, and raffle drawings for gifts generously donated by various businesses around town. In order to defray the costs and maximize the financial benefit to our group, it would be a great benefit if council would contribute to the overhead, either assisting with a monetary donation or event supplies that are still needed, such as cases of water and so forth. As the road race begins at 9:00 AM, we would also like to offer bagels, muffins, and juice, and approximately 100 walkers and runners are expected. It is a thought, hope that through the various contacts that the council has, a group of businesses that hasn't contributed already, may be able to provide any of the items suggested. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration and support. And that race is on May 31st at 9:00 AM. Do they tell you? They did? No. Okay, would you just let me know where it is?
It's going to start at 8:00 PM, then start on Bank Street.
A letter from Adriana's Pizza and Pastry and Cafe, Adriana's Pizza and Cafe, I'm proud to say, is now completing its opening and serving up there, but they would like to express the fact that their extraordinarily smooth beginning is a direct result of the cooperative effort of family, friends, and numerous town officials. We especially wish to clearly note and thank those responsible for their assistance, guidance, and welcoming approach to our new cafe and pastry of Ori. A special thank you to the wonderful residents of Winthrop, Mr. James McKenna, Town Manager, Peter Gilth, President of the Winthrop Town Council, and the other council members, the Winthrop Police and Fire Department, the Licensing Board, the Board of Appeals, and all Building Department inspectors. You have openly accepted us and welcomed us to our community. Without your leadership, kindness, supportive effort, and encouragement, we would not have been able to open on time and complete a process that is necessary and vital to beginning a new business. Truly a pleasure to work with each of you, and as a result, we are confident that we'll be able to service this great town of Winthrop. Mr. Sichetta, can't say enough about the cooperation he got from our boards and our council and everybody who helped him get the process up and going. The Seaside Striders are also having a walk, and that's not until June 12th, but they have asked us to notify, to announce that they are doing that. And it's the former Seaside Striders that have now been taken over and being run by the Parks Committee. And they have a registration at Miller Field where they'll start and finish. And they've given the contacts of Liz Donovan or Dawn Sullivan, and they have their numbers if anybody would like them. And this year, all of the funds that will be raised will be donated to the Parks Committee for the finishing touches on Coughlin Playground and Pond Street Playground, which were renovated in 2014. That's it, the correspondence.
Council President, just one comment regarding the letter from the cafe.
Yeah.
Does that, that makes us business friendly again, I'm hoping?
For now.
That's a nice comment.
Yeah, he called me and asked me what, you know, what he could do. And I said that a letter to the council that I could read publicly thanking the cooperation of the, all of, everybody. I mean, just went on and on and on about how cooperative. Chitino, right? John Chitino. Okay, moving on. Mr. McKenna.
Good evening.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
The committee reports. I just report briefly for the Ordinance Review Committee. They have met, and they will be meeting every other Tuesday from now until they finish their meetings. Finance Committee, Council?
Mr. President, Finance Committee met tonight, tried this meeting, and we had a favorable recommendation come out of committee on the $50,000 free cash transfer for the funding of the Ferry Enterprise Fund, as well as a comment on the fiscal '16 budget. And this isn't, you know, this kind of recommendation. If any council wants to submit amendment to the budget, if they could write it out and email it to the rest of council so we don't, so prior to a meeting of our vote on, at least a Monday before, this is not a requirement, but just a suggestion. And also, one thing that will be needed in any amendment that's made is the dollar amount, the account the money's going into, transferring into, with the account numbers, as well as where the money's coming from, the amounts, the account name and the account numbers. This way, we don't have any confusion, and we're not doing math on the back of an envelope at the end to try to make sure the numbers all match.
And the, you already mentioned that the Finance Committee has come out with a favorable recommendation for the Enterprise Fund. Counsel Perron, did you have anything else to say about the Ordinance Review? I'm sorry, I skipped over you.
We will be having a meeting on Wednesday, excuse me, Tuesday next week. And everyone's welcome to come, and the agenda is posted.
Counsel Mail had something else on the committee report?
You know, on the Ordinance Review, I was surprised at the last Ordinance Review, how few people came. And I think it's fair game to mention that. Always people talking about how they want to do this, or they want to do that, or they're not happy with something. And this is, this is ground zero for where you get a chance to make a comment. And there was a very interesting discussion the other night about the amount of people on the council, and I think on the school committee, and there were a couple of other things. And I think there were five people that showed up that weren't either on the board or counselors. And I think that that doesn't play well if people want to be involved. I hear an awful lot of people saying they want more ability to comment on it. And I'll tell you, if you go to committee meetings, you get a good chance to steer the boat. There's, it gives you a good opportunity. And the ordinance is something you get to write in stone. And it seems as though it's a good opportunity for people that have a thought and want to get something accomplished to come out. It doesn't take a long period of time. You don't have to stay the whole night. And quite frankly, I think they're very happy to hear people's thoughts and ideas. And I thought the conversation last time went back and forth on a couple of points, and I think there was actually a good, healthy discussion afterwards about it also. So I think people should make more of an invested effort to get to this event that happens once every five years and gives you a chance to really, you know, put your hands in the cement and leave an impression for a couple of year period of time.
Thank you, Counsel. Anything else under committee reports? If not, Mr. Manager, so any directed?
Sure, not at all, not at all. Those are important topics, for sure. So while the wheels of government move slowly, they are moving in a direction. I am happy to report that we are on track now to get a streetlight conversion project underway. I submit for all of you on your iPads, an audit of the Siemens audit of our streetlights. It's interesting reading. At first, you know, you sort of eyes glaze over at some of the content, and kilowatt hours, and this and that and whatnot. But then you dig into the proposition, and it's a fairly interesting proposition. We've talked about it before, converting our streetlights to LED lights. The, I would just point really to where the rubber hits the road on the page, page eight. And, you know, that's really where our savings show up. And then the factual proposition, which is on page 12 to 13, which suggests that we could save essentially $95,000 of streetlight expense from moving to LED lighting and use the savings to pay down the investment over 6.5 years. And basically, at the end of that point, be saving essentially, you know, 30% of our expense on streetlight operations going forward. So it's a, I think it's a fabulous, you know, proposition. We've talked about it before, but we have to go through, you know, a very substantial audit. And once, you know, you have read this, you'll note that I need to negotiate an energy management services agreement with Siemens to go forward with this. That means that I will be coming to you with an agreement to take those savings and finance essentially through Siemens, the conversion of these lights. And they will come in and install them over a period of months, and we'll be off and running. So I'd ask you to pay close attention to this agreement. It's essentially a six and a half year agreement with Siemens, because they will be recapturing, you know, their expense, their outlay to install the lights. And we'll be using our operating funds from our streetlight account to finance essentially the proposition.
Where did you send that?
It's in the Dropbox.
I'm in Dropbox, I don't see it.
Under today's meeting? Under town? Yeah. I have a hard copy on desk there if you want to take a look at it.
It's not on the agenda package.
No.
And I'm in the Dropbox, and it's not there.
It's under Winthrop, and it says streetlights, it's the second to last one.
He doesn't have it.
Well, we'll make it available to you. So I'll be working on a contract agreement with Compliment Page and with Tim Gordon to go over the financing strategy in the agreement, and then present that hopefully within the next council meeting or the meeting thereafter.
Pardon? I don't know where it is.
No, it's right.
Okay.
Memorial Day schedule of events has been distributed by the American Legion. Particularly, there'll be a parade on Memorial Day at 2:00, beginning on Fulton Street. I'm looking forward to attending that myself. We had recently a water leak survey of our water system. We had recently a water leak survey of our water system, and it had results. Seven small service leaks have now been addressed, but one substantial leak had been occurring off of Revere Street and close to the Revere Line, and that's being repaired this week. That should take care of any of, any of the leaks that we could identify within our distribution system. I'm hoping to see some significant change in the slope of the curve on our water use as a result of this effort. You know, it's, it's great with our director, who really took seriously, you know, the state of our infrastructure and wanted to find out why that slope had gone up as much as it had. Hopefully, we'll take a bite out of that, and within our next reports from the MWR, we should see some, some change, hopefully, in, in water utilization. So that's been ongoing, and a critical focus right now for the DPW. You'll note that we have agreed to propose additional sidewalk improvements for this fiscal year. While we had been for some time stating that the funding for Contract Four, well, includes certainly substantial sidewalk renovation, we felt it was appropriate to continue our effort to make sidewalk improvements throughout the community. So while we're not doing the, you know, the full 110, $120,000 effort, we think certainly half of that would help and go a long way to continue our effort to repair sidewalks in other areas of the community, and so we're dedicating $65,000 to continue that effort through Chapter 90 Funds, and that's paperwork that's been submitted.
Do we have a list of?
Yes, we can provide, we can provide where that, where that list is. We're continuing the tree, uh, street tree installations as well. I know that's near and dear to several of you on the council. Twenty street, uh, street trees have been installed so far this spring, and the Director Cal had asked me to again put out the word that we are looking for donation requests. So if anyone wants to make further donations and put a tree in front of their home, if there's appropriate space, please talk to the DPW, it's a donation tree, $250, and we'll install and plant a wonderful street tree for anyone who requests one. So contact the DPW for that. We are in delivery now of a utility truck that had been ordered many, many months ago. We certainly could have used it during the winter months here, but now we are here in receipt of it, and we are also anticipating, assuming the capital plan goes forward, to making early requests for ordering of vehicles for the DPW. It's, it's essentially a nine-month proposition, you know, a vehicle ordered, so we have to be much more focused on the time it takes to, to order these vehicles. But we are, we do have that in, in our fleet now, and it'll be a very useful vehicle. We have received notice that, again, the town will receive essentially in the, in the area of $270,000 in Chapter 90 Funds for the year. Those go quickly, and they get dedicated early, so if you have any issues, interests, concerns about those funds, please talk to Director Cal about his priorities in terms of those funds. Recent conversations with TSAC and others, particularly with the Chamber, has raised an issue on parking enforcement, particularly in our commercial districts, and I would ask the council to consider appointing a task force to examine current parking rules and perhaps invite some of our public safety officials to those meetings and see if we can develop some understanding of how to move forward on our parking enforcement. We want to move forward with the existing ordinances, but we're finding some resistance, particularly in our business areas. So we'd like to actually ask that a task force be identified to move, if there are some issues that need to be considered, assuming that we move ahead with reasonable enforcement. If business owners, for example, need to relocate their cars and need an identifiable location for those vehicles for a duration of time during the day or at night, you know, perhaps we should identify where those spaces would be and then have an ordinance adopted to allow, accommodate that, that use. That's an example of some of the concerns that have been expressed to me. But I think it's important for sort of a, almost an unbiased task force, look at the issue and to help develop some reasonable accommodations if those accommodations need to be made, because we need to enforce parking as we have on the books, but we need to do it in a way that's thoughtful and, you know, appreciative of the challenges in our business community. So if we're looking, for example, at changing the hours of enforcement at either Center or Crested Ave or wherever, that we need to, we need to go ahead and be able to tell our policemen, enforce the law. If you can't do that because of issues, what are those issues, and how can those issues be, be properly addressed? So we need to have a focused task force to help us with this, and I would ask the council.
Yeah, given that I, maybe at the, not maybe, at the next council meeting, I would entertain a motion to, to set up a task force, and I would like the council over the next couple of weeks to come up with who you think would be good on, on a task force, a well-balanced, unbiased task, task force, and to look at it, not on a, take a one year to do it, but to do something relatively quickly, so that we can set things up that are enforceable, and that if the, if the rule is there, it will be enforced or changed from there. So we'll look at the next meeting to have a motion to set that up, and then some suggestions for who will be on. Thank you. Good idea.
I'd like to acknowledge Lieutenant Colonel Brian Perrin, who on his recent promotion at the, with the Environmental Police, he's taken a leave of absence of the town's employment and has moved on to a position of substantial authority at the, with the Massachusetts Environmental Police, so I want to congratulate him on that appointment, and wish him well, and we'll be interested to know, you know, what he learns, and, and to have an important contact there at the Environmental Police will be helpful for the community. I also want to acknowledge the Police Department under the direction of Police Chief Adelante in initiating Coffee with the Cops program. I heard good reports that it's, it was a great opportunity for the public to interface with the police and have basic conversations about concerns and issues that the public have in the community, and particularly in the area of public safety, and, you know, it's a great opportunity for people to meet our police officers and discuss issues of concern, and so I think it's a great initiative, and I want to congratulate the Police Department for that. And I'd ask the CFO to give a brief.
Councilor Mill, did you have a question? You said he was, you said he was taking a leave of absence?
Yeah, he's, he's on a four-year leave of absence. We've, we've frozen his position.
Four years?
And it's allowed under the law to, to take a leave of absence.
So he's not taking a new?
He's taking a position with the state as a lieutenant colonel, and can take, and basically, the state law allows for up to five-year leave of absence while you explore other opportunities as a police officer.
And it's an unpaid leave of absence from the town?
No, 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 I, I just wasn't sure, you know, you know, I, I thought he had taken a new position and was moving to a new position, and.
Actually, he can reserve his right to come back.
Yeah.
Could we ask?
Chief?
Hold on, clarify. What, what?
Yeah, if I could, I'm currently on a leave of absence from my civil service position to fill a non-civil service position within, within the town office. So same civil service law applies when you go to a non-civil service position for a state agency. So on the Chapter 31, it is permissible, what the town may have the signature and my signature, I am allowed temporarily to fill that position on a temporary basis, and then, you know, we backfill Petroma's position based on the reserve status, so a reserve officer. So we're not losing him, we're gaining an important contact, and if and when he does return, and he anticipates in returning, we gain a bunch of person with a lot of knowledge and experience. I think that's important, I don't think the, I'm, I'm going to be around for hours, even though I love all you, I love my position, but to develop people to be able to take a look when and if something happens to me, whether voluntary, involuntary, is important. The continuity of the Police Department is important, and I think we owe that to our employees to try to develop them.
Councilor Mill?
Does the other chief have anything to say about the comment that you are on a leave right now too, or?
He'd like to fire me.
You're a paid leader.
Yeah, I didn't realize you were here on a leave, so.
You don't have to have coffee with the firefighter.
Have a barbecue with.
Any further questions for the? Yes, Mr.?
I would ask the CFO to make a quick report.
Yes.
Just quickly, I put the monthly financial report into your box and emailed it to you. It's through April. Today, I took a look at it, the other day, revenues look strong as we come into the close of the year, still a couple of months there. Expenditures look, look good, I really want to thank the department heads. When I sent out an email to say free spending, and you know, we're going to, we've got to take a look at things over the next six weeks, they, they take it serious, and they call me when they have issues, so, and they put a lot of effort into the close of the fiscal year, so I want to thank them.
Thank you. One, Councilor? I know we were up on, you know, people that hadn't paid their property taxes, I want to know, now, the water bills will know by the next meeting, you know, I'll do, can you let us know at that point how we're doing collecting water?
Sure.
One final point for tonight. My office has been tossing around the idea of having a naming contest for our ferry vessel, and we're kicking around the idea of having our school department, particularly the grades, kindergarten through seventh grade, will be invited to submit their idea for a name for our ferry vessel, and we'll be coming out this week with some detail on how to do that, and issue a press release and, and look at the transcript to announce it. I just thought I'd get it out there that we'd like to have a naming contest, so any thoughts on that, I'd be open to it, but to have basically school kids come up with the name.
You know, a couple of the guys down at the ferry terminal, Chuck E. Evans and Kevin, actually, it was Dennis, thought that that would be a good idea for a lot of different things that you want to do to promote the ferry, and they thought it'd be a good way to get a lot of the people in town thinking about, you know, things that you can do to prevent, to promote the ferry, to get people interested in it, and, you know, a lot of different ideas, and maybe it'd be some type of contest, pick out, you know, some of the best stuff to, I think it'd get people involved, and, you know, I know that, I think that everybody has a concern about it, but while a lot of people have a concern, there's still a tremendous amount of people that have a, a good feel towards it, and I think if the entire town gets behind it, this can be something that differentiates us, and I think you have the same feeling over on the economic, you know, the town businesses, I think everybody sees this and says, you know, okay, we got a struggle here, but through this work, we'll have something that no one else does, and, you know, I know a lot of people have talked about the fact that, you know, just riding, we could be the North Shore spot to get from the North Shore out to the islands, and no one has that market, you know? You can go in town and get out to Spectacle, you can get out there, but this could be the spot on the North Shore that you come to, to get your access to the islands, and I think we'd be the first one on that block.
Any further comments on the town manager's report? Not moving on to the school department, I may call upon a superintendent to help me with that update, but I did want to update and congratulate Mr. Masiro for his contract that was voted on last night. Thank you for your service. I also want to mention that there's a whole week of senior activities for the, for the seniors graduating this year, starting with their last day being June 29th, and ending, that's on a Friday, and ending the following Friday on Graduation Day, Graduation Night at 6:00 PM. And as we have so far been able to report at every meeting, the new school is on budget and on time. The drama society and the athletics continue to be successful without getting into detail, they're all doing very well. Did you have anything to add?
I just wanted to let folks know that we're also having a, we started tonight, as a matter of fact, our first class for parents to learn English language who do not speak the English language, so we're really excited about that program. We have 15 participants, that will be held at Kath's Place for two weeks, and then it's going to start going over at the Cummings Building, we're going to set that up, and what's great about that is that's being paid out of the Title III grant. We have a larger population of English language learners, and we're working with the students, but when they go home, if they're not constantly working on the English language because their parents aren't, it kind of defeats it, so we're really happy that we're able to establish that program.
Thank you. Councilor?
How about a program for English people to learn how to speak Spanish?
We can, we certainly have that in the school department currently right now for our students, we would have to look at it for adults.
That's what we're doing for adults.
Right, yeah.
To get them to speak English.
Correct.
Councilor?
So I have a, I have a question on overall on the five district partnership.
Yes.
I've, I've had some people come up to me, parents, internal staff, and external out-of-town people, that wonder how valuable that program is to the town of Winthrop. Somebody pointed out to me outside of town that we're not really the same demographic as that, as the rest of the five parties in it on a socioeconomic basis, and whether or not it is on an intellectual, you know, basis, I don't know, I haven't gone through that, but I, I did sense that we needed a little deeper, I needed personally a little deeper, and I do not hear it discussed, and also, there was a training program that came out through that, through teachers, and I was just curious if anybody on our staff took advantage of that.
Winthrop is taking, since we brought on the curriculum director now, and we were able to really move with the five district partnership in regards to the curriculum, Winthrop teachers are participating quite, a lot more, and will be heavily participating this summer with the five district partnership. The five district partnership works on primarily right now with the curriculum through grades two through eight, and we're working on year-long plans, and the main focus of the five district partnership is we have, whether the demographics are different between the five districts, what we do have a lot of is a lot of transients that move within those five districts continuously. So they go from Winthrop to Everett, or Everett into Winthrop, or Chelsea into Revere, and vice versa. And so what has happened to our, our school districts is when some student would come in from another district, we may be at this point at the curriculum whereas the other district was at another point of the curriculum. So what we've done is we have come together and made sure that the year-long plans were all on those same areas of curriculum, so when the child does move into another district, what that is allowing us is that that child is not falling behind, and it's not causing the district to fall behind. That's one of the areas. The other area that we are able to do for us is for a long time, we didn't have a curriculum director or a curriculum specialist, so we were able to benefit from being part of an urban community, because the four districts that we're in are urban communities and we're not, and so we were able to benefit from some of the financial aspects of various professional development training that was out there. So the five DP at that, for that part, is helping us on a financial aspect as well as professional development, but as we move forward, one of the bigger goals is, is that we're also going to be able to help each other when it comes to our procurement purposes. If we're purchasing things from a five district perspective as opposed to just one school district, whereas we have 2,000 students, when you combine us all, we're 26,000 students, so we get a better buy for our purchase, and so those are the areas that we're working on now. So I hope that helps.
Any other questions on this? Councilor? So did any, did any teachers take, did you, I saw there was a notice on some specialized teacher train, you came on through that, I forget where it was, but.
I've been informed that a lot of our teachers are now taking more opportunities within the five DP, and I know that this summer they will take quite a bit of it, and we, we do offer quite, you know, a lot of it through the five DP, so as far as the actual numbers, I would have to get that from Mr. Woods, but that's what I've been told. I have a meeting tomorrow morning with the five DP superintendents.
Do you have 50 students that are? Do you have 50 students that are going out a year or less?
Oh, in transit on that, we can get that. But we have multiple students that go in and out. Matter of fact, last year, just a case in point, our third grade went from, not this past year, but the year before, we had eight students from Everett who moved right into third grade. Now, that was an unusual thing, but it just, just so happens to have that. So, we see a lot of influx coming in from Ev-, for some reason, a lot of folks from Everett come to Winthrop. A lot of people from Winthrop go to Revere. Revere go to Malden. I mean, it's just the way it all works on it. So.
Thanks.
Any further questions for the school department? If not moving on to old business, continuing deliberation on 60 Herman Street. 60 Herman Street, we've been through some continuances, some postponements, and some continue to the next meeting type of thing. We still have a motion on the floor that says, "I move that the town council approve the petition of Ocean City Development LLC to amend the town a Winthrop zoning map to include 60 Herman Street, Winthrop, within the S D O D zoning, or take any other action relative thereto." As you know, there was a citizen petition that was presented which requires a three-quarters vote, 75 percent vote, which is seven members.
Councilor Sanford?
Yeah. The way I understand it, Councilor Leteri was gonna try to make the meeting tonight. I think it's important as we go forward that we have the whole council here. I think it's an important vote. I, I don't wanna vote just to vote and to continue it. I'd like to, maybe if we can deviate from Council Wolves a little bit and put this on hold at least for a little while, go through the rest of our meeting, maybe bring it back up to council.
I just did one of those real modern things and texted Councilor Leteri. Councilor Leteri had an unexpected change in a, in a family commitment. And, and based on that unexpected change, he, he had to be not here for the beginning of the meeting. I just texted him and he can be here. He's hoping by 9:10 if we're still in session. So, he would like to make a motion to move this to later on in the meeting so that we would have a full complement to vote.
Yes.
Motion by Councilor Sanford, is that a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilor Boncorry. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Council?
If we're to take it up tonight, I guess.
Yes, yes. If he gets here by 9:10 and we're still in session, which I think both will happen, then we'll take it up tonight. If, if he doesn't get.
We'll have an opportunity to have further discussion if he's not here.
Pardon me?
We will have an opportunity to have a further discussion if he's not. Thank you.
You know, if that's the wish of the council to do. But you will have that opportunity in public comment if he doesn't get here anyway. Okay. S D O D petition for, for 15 to 17 Walden Street. There was a typo on the, on the agenda for tonight. So, I just wanted to correct that typo. It said 10 to 14 Walden. It should have said 15 to 17. So, we do have a report from the planning board. And I would like to just read the, the final three paragraphs, which is their recommendation on, on the project. In recognition of these findings, the findings they made above, and this for anybody who would like to have a copy of it, it will be available. Just let me know and we can get you a copy. The recommendation was, "In recognition of these findings and after serious consideration of the testimonial provided by the applicants, the abutters, Winthrop Planning Board recommends as follows. The proposed rezoning of the real property at 15 to 17 Walden Street, to apply, to apply the provisions of Chapter 17.48, Special Overlay Development District will encourage the redevelopment of an existing non-residential property that is functionally obsolescent and represents a blighting influence on the adjacent neighborhood. While the board does not comment on conceptual development plans presented in advance of the special permit process, the board does not believe the applicant's reliance on the preservation of a portion of the existing structure to achieve density bonuses, density bonuses under the building reuse section of Chapter 17.48. It's reasonable or sustainable under the provisions of that provision of the code. On the basis of these findings, the Winthrop Planning Board voted unanimous approval of a motion by Member David Stasio, seconded by Member Honor Mercer, to recommend the approval of the requested amendment to the Winthrop zoning map to apply the provision of the special development overlay district to the property located at 15 to 17 Walden Street. As we know, what the council's function is at this point, after they have a recommendation from the planning board, is to have a public hearing, similar to what the planning board had, but in front of the council, to determine whether or not the council is going to vote an S D O D. When the council votes the S D O D, if it's voted in the positive direction, then it goes back to the planning board to approve what the design of the project will be. Tonight, what our function is, is to review the planning board report, which I did. And I would suggest that we now need to schedule a public hearing. There will be no vote tonight on, on the S D O D. The only vote we would have tonight is to have a public hearing. Make a motion to have a public hearing at the June 2nd meeting? Motion by Councilor Boncorry to set up a public hearing for the S D O D on Walden Street, 15 to 17 Walden Street, for our June 2nd meeting. Is there any question, any comment from the, we have a second.
Second?
Second by Councilor, you know, Nick. Any discussion by the council? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. So, we will have a public hearing next meeting on June 2nd. Also, on June 2nd, we will have the budget vote. That's at the next regular council meeting. We also have a motion to, it's for the transfer that we talked about earlier for the ferry. Excuse me just a minute while I dig out the motion. I move that the town council authorize the transfer of $50,000 from free cash to fund the enterprise fund known as the quote Town and Ferry Tourism and Culture Fund, end of quote, or take any, any other action relative thereto. Is that a motion from the?
The motion came from the finance committee with a positive recommendation.
Coming from finance with a positive recommendation, there's no need for a second. Any discussion on the motion? Not? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Motion to transfer from the capital, let me just dig that. By the town manager, I move to council transfer $65,000 from Fund 964 Capital Stabilization Fund for the purpose of funding the necessary repairs to the town hall cupola, or take any other action relative thereto.
Do I have a motion? That gets referred. It's a referral motion.
Do I have a motion to refer to finance? Councilor Sanford makes a motion to refer to finance. Is there a second?
Councilor Boyajin seconds the motion. Any discussion on the motion to refer to finance?
Not? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion to authorize the use of $23,000 from water enterprise funds to fund the Belle Almage. Could I have a motion to refer to finance? That's the Belle Almage water, water main repair. Motion by Councilor Boncorry, seconded by?
Councilor Devento? Sure. Yes.
All those in favor refer to finance, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Transfer $40,000, that's $20,000 for free cash, $20,000 from the town council reserve, to the Gorman School Handicap Playground. Discussion on the motion to refer to finance?
Mr. President? Yeah. I just gotta ask one question of the town manager CFO. We're getting close to the end of the fiscal year. Are we gonna have to spend this money before July 1?
That's precisely why we've carved it up into two pieces, just to keep some balance.
Excuse me. Are you coming back?
Yeah.
Okay.
Keep some balance in both accounts. But essentially, we're watching the level of both of those accounts for that very reason.
The, the spending has to occur though also.
Yes. Well, for spending, on free, the, the available free cash.
I just wanted to.
We wanna, we wanna appropriate from free cash. And we can do that through the end of July 15th, right?
Yeah. The issue that came up here is the playground. This $40,000 is on the capital plan for fiscal year 16. However, they wanted to get the playground completed this summer, and free cash wouldn't be certified. So, this is an alternative to allow the playground to continue using part of this year's free cash and part of the town council reserve.
Okay.
So, the money will be set up as a special article.
Okay.
And it doesn't need to be spent by.
Okay. Because I know, you know, getting procurement.
They'll be encumbered whenever it isn't spent.
That's my concern. Any further discussion on the motion to refer to finance? Just a question I have, is do we have any idea, this is the playground that the Marietta Fund put together.
Right.
That's right.
Do we have any idea how much money is in fund that can be used to this?
They've raised, yes. Mr. Fabiano linked the spreadsheet on the matter, and it's quite detailed. In fact, I think they've raised somewhere of $81,000.
Seventy, seventy.
But most $81,000 is what has been raised, I'm told, approximately. And that is dedicated for the equipment and the landscaping. The rubber surface, however, was always something that the town was considering as having installed. And it's, it's proven to be essential to the project because they need to get that set before any of the delivery of the equipment can be, can be handled. And summer months is really the best time to do that for obviously the weather, to pure the rubber effectively, and to prepare for the rest of the project to go forward.
We have a motion to refer to finance. Any further discussion? Not? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. We have a motion to approve prior years bills in the aggregate of $859.31. Do we have a motion to refer to finance?
Motion.
Motion by Councilor Boyajin, seconded by?
Councilor.
Councilor Sanford, seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. We have a motion to, that's for 99, 95, 99, 25, which did not appear on the agenda. I don't know why it didn't appear on the agenda.
It's on the agenda.
Where is it?
First item.
On the new business.
Okay, well, contract settlements. So, I missed, I, okay. I have an agenda that has it missing. Okay. For contract settlements, the 99, 25, I move that the town council authorize the transfer of 99, 25, $9,925. The town manages contract settlements to, there's a series of accounts there. Is there a motion to refer to finance?
Of course.
Motion by Councilor Devento to refer to finances. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilor Boyajin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. We have a motion for sidewalk permit. I move that the town council adopt sidewalk obstruction permit application presented to an established fee of $30 for such permit, and to amend the town fee schedule to include such fee, or take any other action relative thereto. Motion?
What is it?
It's for the outside sidewalk tables to establish a fee of $30 for that.
Is that a one-time fee?
An annual fee, I believe.
Yes.
Annual. Any, any other comment on that, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, we have a form there that clearly details the, the issue. We are often asked for review and inspection and approval of, of location and where, where place obstacles or obstructions in sidewalks. And we need a process to do that effectively so that folks just don't go out and do what they want, whatever they wanna do on a public sidewalk. That they, they need to follow the format, feel that they got their just review, and, and it makes everybody play by the same rules and on the same page. So, it's, it's something that's been a long time to come. But the folks that we've talked to appreciate that because they wanna know that they, that this is an opportunity that they can avail themselves of. And there's some, there's some structure around it. So, we, we wanna see this move forward and be encouraging of folks to put chairs and tables on if they'd like to, you know, in areas where it seems to be working.
I actually got a question. Is this gonna take any change to any of our ordinance? Has anybody researched that at this point?
It.
I see you're still leaving the 36 inches of clearance.
Yes.
But does it need to be any other change to the ordinance?
We're essentially amending the ordinances to include this permit to enable people to apply for the location of these chairs within there.
Do we need a motion to refer that to rules, council?
Yes.
Can we pass it without referring it to rules? Is the, why I'm asking you that question?
You know, let's take a look and see if, if something needs to get amended. That's why we're referring it out.
Okay.
But it's an application and a fee.
Okay. Did I, yes, Councilman Milton?
Well, I'll make the motion. But I think we've had more people come to licensing this year than I think we've had in.
We already gave up.
Yeah, I'm saying there's been a great, you know, uptick in the amount of people that got outdoor seating this year all over the place. So, I think it's.
Up and coming.
Yeah. No, I think it's great.
It sure is. Yeah. It looks great around, by the way.
Well, as Councilor Corry points out, if you, if you still get an ordinance that's, what, 36 inches of clearance, is, is that met by all of these with this permit? That's one of the standards in the, in the application.
In the application.
That's mindful of those dimensional requirements.
Okay. Well, you have a motion. Just a question. Have the two or three that have been approved that I know of, did they fill out these applications and pay the $30?
They submit an application to Director Cowal. And the building inspector then goes out and takes a look. And I'm sure there's some administrative oversight of what has taken place. This formalizes a little more precise procedure, how that should, should work.
But I, I think the people that have already applied for the outdoor seating went to the licensing.
Correct.
Not to Steve Cowal. Is, where do you want these to go?
This, this is under the building inspector. They go out and measure for safety. And that's, that's, they've really promulgated this as a way for them to be able to know that, that such allowances have been given through a licensing application, that they're, they're out there measuring properly and that, that folks are mindful of the dimensional issues that they have to be concerned about. It really just sort of gives everyone some structure around adopting, you know, this.
So, we have a motion to refer to rules?
Mr. President?
Do we start the question?
Mr. President.
About, the licensing board has already given some. The most people have, they not come back and come.
This is more of an administrative action. The licensing board may grant approval. It still doesn't mean that anyone can just put it anywhere they want. They have to have our inspection go out there, certify where this is safe, where what's being placed.
One concession at a time, please, council?
And that the dimensional issues are, are met. So, it's a, it's a, it's really, I think, putting a finer point on a procedure that's already been allowed.
So, they still have to go to licensing?
Yes, if, if.
So, you'd go to licensing and then if licensing passes you, you would apply?
Then get it inspected. Then you have to have it inspected.
So, licensing would be contingent upon you, meaning the requirements, you're good. Like, you don't go to the, you don't go there first.
You go to licensing first.
No, it's a licensing first.
Mr. President? All right. Councilor Devento?
This is sidewalk obstruction. The licenses for, the licenses that have been issued are for outside seating on private property. Outside seating as part of a restaurant is different than a sidewalk obstruction permit. A sidewalk obstruction permit could be a sign, it could be a chair, it could be a bench. It doesn't mean outside seating. If you're gonna do outside seating, whether they're gonna serve alcohol, whether they're gonna serve food, whether there's gonna be entertainment, they need to go before the licensing commission. That's on private property. This is regarding public property, the public sidewalk obstruction. Two different things.
Okay. So, it's to allow sidewalk permits and to set a fee in, in inspection. Do we need to refer that to rules, or do you want to just have a vote tonight? What's better for you?
I'll defer to the council. I, I wanna make sure your questions are answered.
Okay, what's the, what's the wish of the council? Councilor Cowal?
My question was if there's 36 inches of clearance or, what do you mean? Is there any chance if somebody was 34, could they get relief? I mean, is this something that is, you don't have that 36, you can't have it?
36 is a wheelchair bike.
It's an ADA.
One at a time?
For the year.
Question? Nick, excuse me. Councilor Devento?
I'm not finished yet.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
So, if you did have on one side, you didn't have the clearance, but across the street on the other side you had the clearance, would that, does that come into play? Just curious, just kind of want to know how that works. You know, you have a street coming down one side, it's got some outside dining, but the other side is open.
You have to have thirty-six inches.
Have to have it right in front of whoever it is. Okay, that's all I want, yeah, that's all I wanted to know.
Any further comments, questions? Did we have a motion to refer it or do we have a motion to vote on it?
Motion to vote on it.
Motion to vote, okay. I move that the town adopt a sidewalk obstruction permit application as presented and establish a fee of thirty dollars for such permit. Further amend the town fee schedule to include said fee or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Counsel Verone, seconded by Counsel Santos. Any discussion on the motion? Not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, unanimous. Thank you. I move that the town council approve the following recommendation from the Winthrop Traffic Safety Committee to modify section ten thirty-two, sections twenty-four, to exclude town employees with valid permits from the two-hour restriction between seven a.m. and five p.m. in municipal lots, specifically the old DPW and George Street lots, or take any other action relative thereto. Can you just give us a comment on that?
Yes, I'll defer to Chief Delahanti to discuss the matter of the George Street lot.
Well, by directive of the town manager's office, town hall employees are now parking in the old DPW lot at College Hill and the George Street lot. All municipal lots have two-hour limits with the exception of the town hall lot. So, they're technically being directed in an administrative way to park over there, but they're violating the ordinance. So, we are looking at enforcement, we'll be tagging the people for doing exactly what their George offices have told them to do. So, it needs to be tweaked. We need to have some type of agreement that either stickers, we prefer stickers for town hall employees or town employees, and the town hall employees is not appropriated any longer. Town employees during eight to five, now it'll be.
Seven. You had seven to five, were you, seven to five or did you want eight to five?
Eight to seven.
Monday to Thursday?
Eight to seven, no, I don't think.
One at a time, please.
I don't think before eight would be useful. They're usually here, you know, between eight and nine. So, and the Tuesdays and Thursdays, they're here until seven at night, so.
So, do we need to amend the motion from eight to seven?
Rules can change in the committee.
Rules can change in the committee.
Make a motion to refer to rules.
Motion to refer to rules.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Verone. All those in favor?
Discussion?
Yes.
So, you know, this may be a perfect place to consider putting a meter in because then you wouldn't have to give out. You wouldn't have to give out, but sit down, no one asks you to stand.
It's like a job, you know, out of respect.
Yes, thank you for the respect. But here, you know, I know we're talking about it down in the landing and the meters are very, very capable of going off and somebody that was an employee, because they were in there, could put it in. And then we would have that capability to extend that to other day parts. And it would be flexible and you could change it around and it would be the beginning.
You might have that expected, but I'm fully supportive. The meter is easier for us to handle than worrying about what time is where and what lot's where and was an hour here, but it's two hours down there. But I nearly almost got crucified last time the meter issue came up, so.
Did you just say you agreed?
I did agree. It's easier for us to handle. When the meter's up, it's up. We don't have to worry about what the ordinance is, so I'll do my end of that.
One comment at a time, please.
Counsel Santos. One of the considerations may be running in conjunction with the hours of town hall or the appropriate administrator. And that way you know on Tuesdays and Thursdays or whatever, town hall is open. You run it in parallel, maybe an hour before, an hour after, until thirty minutes before. It would take the, it would make the rule pretty stringent.
We have a motion made and seconded to refer this to finance, I mean to rules. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. And it's not on the agenda, but where it came up in that motion, I would suggest that put a motion on the DPW to look at this whole parking lot issue. I drove by George Street.
We're doing a task force.
Task force on parking. Okay, okay, we'll include that in there. George Street parking lot, I drove by tonight and I wouldn't park my car in there. The pavement is so bad and we need to have a source of revenue to fix that pavement. But that'll come on later.
Maybe we can talk about this and the two of us kind of.
But I, the green button to your left, sir.
Oh, very much appreciated.
Okay, I would suggest that DPW take that up as a separate issue when we report back to the task force. That's not a vote, it's just a suggestion.
Have we assembled the task force?
Next meeting. We have a motion from Mr. McKenna. I move that the town council approve the following recommendation from the Winthrop Traffic Safety Committee to modify section ten point sixteen to one hundred. Parking limited on certain streets during certain times and any other chapters or sections thereto by modifying the one-hour parking limit of two-hour parking from one, one-hour parking limit to two-hour parking. Is that what you meant, Mr. McKenna?
What? I recommend that to allow, to amend the one-hour parking on Colleen Street from one hour to two, sorry, typo, to two hours.
To a maximum of two-hour parking from one Colleen Street. So, Chief, do you want to comment on that, please?
Yeah, this was before TSAC. It's been before TSAC a couple of times. So, we've recommended it out after a favorable vote. It wasn't a unanimous vote. I dissented on that vote, but the vote carried four to one. So, that is a recommendation. I think, you know, John E. put an extensive time into going around to the business owners and speaking with them, you know, as a representative of TSAC. We appreciate his efforts, but this seems to be what the business owners want. And again, before we went to, we went to one-hour parking for teachers who were always parking there and that was not good for their business either. So, that's what we have in TSAC.
So, a short time ago, it was changed from no limit to one hour at the request of the residents. Then following that, the residents requested that the one hour be changed to two hour. Is that correct?
A combination of business owners, the residents actually were not so much in favor of having the one-hour restriction, they wouldn't park in front of the house. But the business owners found it very disturbing to generate business for them and to get people in and out of their businesses with cars parked there all day. So, we went from no limit to the one-hour limit about a year, if my memory corrects me, about a year and a half ago. And then now we're recommending from the one hour to two-hour limit with the same petition with some, you know, majority of the same signatures that were in the first that wanted the one hour and now wants the two hour, so.
Just a question, because I thought we got a letter from Attorney Todd. They're looking to take off the limit altogether and he had some kind of petition with that from neighbors. I don't recall whether you saw that.
He did, I responded to that initial letter. Copy went to the town manager's office, but Mr. Todd was one with the petition to have the time restricted to the place. So, he pulled the, you know, John Kerry on us. So, we, you know, we did interview other business owners that seemed it's necessary to have. The one hour was not working for the hairdresser there. He serves an older client town that can't get in and out at an hour, you know, the hair dying and the hairdos and all that. He's blocking that out.
You mean color change?
The test with the bat.
Yeah, I think. You have a question by Todd, you meant color change, right?
Yes. You know, the only thing we have to be sensitive to, the convenience store came in after we voted for this. You know, so we did this without a convenience store there and it wasn't there when we voted and sent it up to the town manager. So, I just want to make sure that's aware of that.
Counsel.
Chief, that letter I had sent you, I believe, was about on Winthrop Street. Will that cover that as well? Okay, so that's a separate thing that's being looked at?
That's still before TSAC separately. Mr. E. is doing the same process as we did on Colleen Street. He's meeting with every person that has a vested interest in that, wants that building. And then you report back to TSAC.
Thank you.
Motion to refer to rules. I think on that.
Second.
I think on that Winthrop Street thing, we would ask you to hold on that and put it to the task force and put you on the task force.
Don't look in for a digital.
Not you.
I'd be happy to push it along though.
We have a motion for Counsel to.
Refer to rules.
To further rules. The second?
Yeah.
Second.
Mr. President, today, Mr. Deeb was putting notices up on all the stores in Winthrop Street that that item, the TSAC meeting for tomorrow, I think has been canceled till next Wednesday. And he's trying to get all the rest next month or next week. I'll have to double check, but he is more, he's told the residents, so we need to.
Okay, so, yeah, so, I would say take it up anyway. And then, okay, so a motion to refer to rules.
Rules.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Mr. President?
Yes.
Can we, can we recess?
Can we take one more motion and then do a recess? Is that okay?
Sure.
Motion from the, that the town council renew the town's contract with Powers &amp; Sullivan LLC as our independent audit firm. The fiscal years twenty fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen or take any other action relative thereto. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Counsel Verone, seconded by Counsel Calhoun. Discussion?
No, no. Just a question. Did we interview any other people or is this an extension? We put some.
We did, we did not interview any other people. The contract, the initial contract was for three years and this is a request to extend it another three years.
Another three years. We don't have to put that on as a power of P.
No, no.
No, any further discussion? Not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. We have a motion from Counsel Del Bento to take a recess. Before we take the recess, just a, I just got a text from Counsel Latiri that he expects to be here between nine-ten and nine-fifteen. If we were to take a recess for ten minutes or so and then come back and go into executive session with the plan to come out of executive session with the only order of business to vote on that. So, motion to Counsel Del Bento, seconded by Counsel Santos. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, unanimous. Okay, back to regular session. The council anticipates going into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to a non-union employee negotiation. Discussion of this matter in open meeting could have a detrimental effect on the non-employee negotiation. The matter to be discussed is non-union employee negotiation. We will return to open session to revert back to old business, the item of continuing deliberation and rezoning of sixty Herman Street, and we also will come back at that time for a public comment. Could I have a motion to, when we go into executive session?
Motion.
Motion by Counsel Calhoun, seconded by Counsel Santos. Any discussion on the motion? If not, could we have a roll call?
Counsel Calhoun?
Yes.
Counsel Santos?
Yes.
Counsel Moncory?
Yes.
Counsel Verone?
Yes.
Counsel Latiri?
Yes.
Counsel Del Bento?
Yes.
Vice President Neal?
Yes.
President G.
Yeah. Returning to open session. A motion before the council. Would the town council approve the petition of Ocean City Development LLC to amend the town Winthrop zoning map so as to include sixty Herman Street, Winthrop, within the SDOD zoning or take any other action relative thereto? It's a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion? Counsel Calhoun.
Counsel Latiri, you weren't here, but there was an announcement made by local Jim Polino. And based on the announcement, Jim mentioned that Highland Real Estate would not be handling the listing of Ocean City Development's sixty Herman Street project. And I sincerely hope that announcement, that the perception of any personal gain, you know, would go away. And so, therefore, based on that announcement, I'd like to move forward and I would be willing to support the project. So, I would like to vote, you know, yes for this project to, for the SDOD zoning designation. And with that, though, I would also like to ask the developers that, you know, if and when, that they be very sensitive to the neighbors and the neighborhood and, you know, just be aware of like the noise factor or any inconveniences should this project move forward.
Okay, just as a point of information, all we're voting is to go the SDOD and then the planning board. The planning board will put those considerations in there. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Not. Denise, would you take a roll call?
Yeah, you know, I voted for this the first time and I'm going to vote for it again, but this is a terrible process. This is, this is, you know, you know, we've gone back and forth and back and forth and back and forth and I don't know if there's a lot of, you know, trust in the process when we, you know, we take, this is now our third and fourth vote on the subject and I'm just not sure that that's the way it is. And, you know, I have, whoever wrote the SDOD, I think it's probably a great starting point, a cornerstone, but boy, it's filled with a lot of problems because it pits the council versus the planning board. The planning board said, we think it's a good idea, they send it to us with the trust that we'll give it back to them where they can put on the appropriate controls, yet we, appropriately so, have decided to hold back and get more information about it. And somewhere along the line, I think we have to come to a point where the SDOD gets redefined so that the council gets the amount of time and effort they want before it goes. Because I, as a counselor, feel that we're the ones that are looking at this from a townwide perspective. We're looking to see how it affects everybody's neighborhood. And I think that, you know, right now, this, it just to me, and again, I'm voting for it, I think you guys have done a good job. This isn't about this particular project, it's about the process. And the process, to me, doesn't sit right. This is now our third vote. I remember a couple of years ago when I got onto the council and we were pushing something and someone, multiple people came up and said, well, if you don't like it, you'll go back and do it again. And if you don't like that, you'll go back and do that again. And I don't know that that's the right way to do business. So, again, whether it's the SDOD or whatever it is, I was for the project in the past, I'm not for the process, so.
The process that we are following is state law, chapter forty. This is not a town thing. We follow the state law to the letter. I don't believe and I object to the fact that this is pitting the planning board and the council. I think this is a, this is a process that the council and the planning board work together very well under the guidelines and under the law. What, chapter forty?
Haven't written our bylaw on the SDOD. The first step is that they have to file a petition with the council.
Right.
The council doesn't immediately have to send that to the planning board. Not immediate. We can take our time and look at it. We have so many days to send it to them. We don't have to send it immediate.
Fourteen days.
We have that fourteen days that we can look at it and wait to our second meeting, which is usually fourteen days apart, before we send it to them once it comes to us.
No, according to the interpretation and to the Verbiage and Party B that I got, the Verbiage and Party B says that when it's referred to the council, the council within fourteen days must refer to the planning board. The planning board within sixty-five days must have a hearing.
So, you're saying if they don't submit it on one of our meetings or prior, we can't wait that extra meeting?
That's right. If it's submitted the day after the meeting, thirteen days later, there's another meeting, at which point we have to send it to the planning board. Planning board then has sixty-five days to have a public hearing. The planning board does not have to send a recommendation back to the council. If the planning board does send the recommendation back to the council, then the council has ninety days to act on that recommendation. So, that could be, planning board sends it back to the council who then holds a public hearing of the council. Ninety days from the public hearing of the council, the council votes. Ninety days from the public hearing of the council, the council votes. If the council does not vote, the issue is dead. The council has ninety days to vote it. So it is, it is not a pitting against, it's a cooperative effort, and it worked. The, all we're voting for tonight is whether or not we grant an SDOD. Then it goes back to the planning board. It's out of our hands once we grant the SDOD. Planning board then says whether they're going to grant one unit, fifty units, or whatever. When it goes back to the planning board, they now have to have another public hearing to determine the guidelines and the rules under which they're going to do that. Counsel Mayor.
And whether the term pitting is appropriate or inappropriate, the fact is, my discussions with people on the planning board did lead me to believe that they had some concern about the amount of time and effort that the council put into it that they shot, thought should have been their prerogative. And the fact that this is a fourteen-day notice, maybe the rule has to be changed so that we can do some public hearings on it before we send it.
Any discussion on the motion, whether or not the council's going to vote on SDOD? We have no control over Chapter 4. Counsel Delvento.
Motion to move the question.
I don't think we need to. Rule, call the roll, please.
Counsel Cala? Yes. Counsel Sanford?
Yes.
Counsel Boncorry?
Yes.
Counsel Verone?
No.
Counsel LaTieri?
Yes.
Counsel Bayagen?
No.
Counsel Delvento?
Yes.
Vice President Neal?
Yes.
President Gill?
Yes. Motion passes, seven to two. The SDOD petition for Ocean City Development to be granted an SDOD has been approved, and we will return back to the planning board for the, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Back to, back to public comment on the agenda. Is there any public comment?
Yes, I do have a public comment. The public comment is, carry on my thought on this, that I do believe the SDOD.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Counsel, seeing public comment.
What precinct?
I'll have to look that up. If you could put that in.
Precinct.
So am I speaking as a counselor or am I speaking as a citizen?
This is public comment. You're speaking as a citizen.
So my name is Craig Bell. I'm a precinct four, and I think it would be a good idea if the members of the council would reconsider some of the elements of the SDOD to make a smoother process, so the council doesn't have to look like it's going back and forth. As a citizen, I can tell you, I don't think it looks particularly good for the council to vote three or four times on a single issue that does, in my mind, make it appear as though we're going back and forth, or we're not getting our way and somebody's trying to push it. I think that that goes out and it doesn't leave a smooth ground or smooth playing field for a lot of people. And I think that it would be better, if possibly, in the ordinance review that is coming up, that we look at this as a community and decide whether or not this is the best process now having gone through it. I think that there is not enough time for the council to do its due diligence before it sends it to the planning board.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Uh, any for the public comment? Not, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Counsel, who made the motion?
Counsel.
Counsel Delvento, seconded by?
Sure.
Counsel Bayagen? Discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, unanimous. Thank you.